All right, and I think I should always have. All right, so we're calling to order and we should take attendance of the members.
Nick Webb.
Present.
Mary Jo Phelps.
Here.
Mark Giacconian.
Here.
Larry Willett. Barbara Segaloff.
Yeah.
Joan Ulate.
Yeah.
Kristen Waterbury.
Did you hear from them at all?
No.
No, okay.
That was great.
Cool. The first order of business is obviously to approve the minutes from last month. Lori, I was just fine job. I do look longer after she sends them out, so. Any discussion on minutes from last month? If not, can I get a motion to approve the minutes? I'll make the motion. Mark makes a motion. I guess second.
I'll second.
Gentlemen, send this. All right.
I'll abstain because I wasn't present.
Just squeaking over the air. So, any discussion? No. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? All abstaining? All right, great. So it's been an interesting and just frustrating month, as Abby knows. We haven't moved the land acquisition forward as quickly as I had hoped. And it's really stalled now on technical processes or several.
The assessment?
Yeah, surveys.
Surveying.
You know, what they call the meets and bounds. I'm learning a lot about surveys and what they can and can't do anyway. So hopefully, I guess the surveyor that we paid for sent in a revised map and revised meets and downs tonight, so we haven't had a chance to look at it. Abby will go through it. I'll go through it tomorrow and we'll hopefully put that issue to bed. Additionally, there's an additional piece of property, very small, about one acre that's being offered to the land trust and it's it's actually a nice piece of property because it's contiguous to two other land trust pieces. Davis Farms Road is the name of the street. It's on Close to Egypt Lane. It's right in back. You know where that horse farm is? As you go up Route eighty-one?
Yeah, yeah. Marvel, they know that?
It's right back of that horse farm.
Right, homebacks up to that.
Yeah. And the attractive part is that it'll allow us to have some parking and an easy way into the property. And if we can all of a sudden now start building trails.
Wow, I guess that's not. I'm not grasping.
I didn't either.
Reach of the property, if that's where we could have parking.
So if you go to the very end of Davis Farms Road there.
Right.
Now, I think they want to build two more houses.
They, that's what, yeah.
And then also give us an acre on the other side of it towards our property.
Okay.
So that's where, you know, it'll be another one of those round circles at the end of Davis Farms Road.
Sure.
And then we can build a little parking lot and get people into transit as opposed to coming off of Downhill Road, which is what they do now. And that has no parking whatsoever. So, so that was a good sort of ray of sunshine this week as well. We're sort of getting towards the end of the year and there's some things that happen at the end of the year that we've just got to begin to focus on. Probably the most important one is the budget. For next, you know, we have to submit it now, even though it doesn't go into effect till July first. We've got a July first to June thirtieth fiscal year. But the town is going through their budget process. And Abby, stop me if I'm wrong, but this is sort of like every year we sort of submit it. And it's better to get ahead of this than behind it, so. What I wanted to do was just go through what we did last year during this session. And we'll figure out, you know, how we should adjust this up or down. And then I'll submit a budget to Abby so that you can include it in the town plan. Okay, so that's, that's on deck for today. So that, let's, any questions or comments before we go to old business? Okay. Residential food composting. And I think we should change the title of this to residential and school food composting.
Sure.
So one of the things I was thinking, MJ, is it's probably time to begin to sit down with your contact at the schools. Unless that's already happened.
Well, no, I don't know.
No, so we're scheduling a time to get together, so I had reached out to them. We had times it didn't work. They just reached back out to me, so we're, hopefully within the next two weeks have a meeting.
Excellent.
We just go through the program and then from there, set up a meeting with Mary Ann and sort of say, look, that's something that we can pursue.
Right.
So is Sam King gonna be involved?
Yeah.
Okay.
So that's great news, you know.
I can tell you what it is too. Is that, join anyone it is, you can come.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, let's keep MJ on the list on that. That's a cool panel.
No more paper.
No more paper, all right, good. But yeah, I mean, I remember when I did the research on the grants last year. It was like I was finding out about grants that were just about due, and so we were too late to the party. Because you really do need to have everybody on board before you go for a grant.
Right.
So it's great, we can move this forward.
Abby, Sam King had, when I had first talked to him about this, he said some towns use their NIP money for, to fund, you know, programs like this.
For people that are like, the NIP money is for every NIP that's sold in the town of Clinton. I think Clinton gets ten cents.
I think that kind of sense.
Yeah, a box.
Yeah, those little plus those nasty.
So when we, when we go around on the cleanup days and we find about eighty of them, you can at least know that the town of Clinton is.
Right, right.
That's one of his ways of releasing management.
Right, and so, do you know what, do, have we, do we have a little fund?
We should have the money. I do not know how it is used or allocated right now.
Right, that's what I was going, yeah, okay.
Let me find out for Bob.
Okay.
I remember talking to Carrie now and that, and it's pretty substantial, actually.
Yeah, I talked to Carrie about it too.
So. That's good news, but again, it's one of those things where the sooner we can get started on it, the sooner we can prepare for it and get it in.
Right.
I seem to remember it was due in August timeframe, so, yeah. But you have to have sort of a, what, what's the budget? Is everybody on board, you know, is this, you know, get the grounds well, so. I'm not telling Abby anything she doesn't know. She's the master.
Do you have to restrict how that money gets allocated?
There's so many uses for NIPS in terms of waste processing. Could be keeping the dump open. Could be, you know, I don't think there's any cost to the food composting that we do right now residential. But, by the way, there's been a change in that, just so everybody knows. We can no longer track it because they are encouraging people to just take your food compost and dump it in the leaf piles. Which actually makes it a lot easier for me.
It does.
I'm such a fan of that.
And it kind of flipped a toe, right?
Yeah, it kind of flipped it, and we were doing about five hundred times already, and that's kind of what we had. I have, so we've lost the ability to track unless we're going to go through the leaf piles. But, you know, the good news is out there, and I think it's far more sustainable, the the dump people, and I talked to them a number of times. They were not thrilled with the whole.
Yeah, they're not.
And so the fact that we're going up and taking that step out from them is a real positive, so that's, that's good news. So, all right, anything else on the food composting?
No, not that I know of. So that'd be great to.
Yeah, I'll make sure I'll post you the dates and times and then all of America.
Thanks.
Anything on textile recycling? I haven't heard anything recently.
So we, in our first month, we'll deliver a thousand pounds, are going to have sixty dollar bags, five dollars bags, around that range. So it's a hundred and twenty dollars a ton back in the town, so it's supposed to get it. So there was some, you know, initial push and then obviously folks were out there and then educating. I think with some more, you know, I think we're, we'd be in good shape. Basically, it's eager to get other locations up and running, and so this is sort of the pilot piece of having a monitored site to, you know, kind of see how their services are. But once we are comfortable, I think we, you know, and then I have this new conversation that we have on the recycling, we're gonna be recycling in schools, there may be other, you know, additional applications around. Obviously, they're bound to their hours, so it would be nice to do.
Yeah.
There's a lot of concern about not having the monitor.
Yeah, well, I was telling you that Mark Richards, who had one of those textile recycling things up at his, one of his locations, and he said it turned into a disaster area, so we've got to be careful with it.
Right, and then that's why your town was very clear. Not any other municipal properties till here, you know, until they go back to the planning position, unless we can monitor.
And I would like to state for the record, I was at least half of that sixty-five dollars. Going up, we cleared out closets and I got more stuff there. Boxes of stuff. Larry, welcome.
Thank you.
Good to see you, man. So we just reflect that Larry is joining the meeting. Okay, good news on that, that's great. How does that money get spent? Not that it's a huge amount of money.
So right now, it just goes back directly to the general fund. If we wanted to request that it become a string for something else, now we can retire. We have that conversation, so in tandem with the budget, we can find out if we can sort of allocate that to conservation commission things or to specific, you know, any sort of other waste management program.
Right, right.
You know, these become advertising for maybe the work needs to get done in that head name.
Okay, I mean, that's something to think about for next meeting. I actually think sustainability really kicked this thing off. Should have divs in terms of where that, that goes. We helped, but they were the ones who really got it started and got it going.
Yeah.
Probably worth a conversation with them soon. Okay, cool. Updating on reporting mechanisms for invasive plants. Insects. This is from Boulder Lake Tax District as an idea. You know, Abby, you were looking at what the state has as a mechanism?
Yeah, I mean, so there, there's the state law and then there's sort of the education outreach.
Yeah.
Things. In terms of tracking, there's, there's not a good sort of local tool. I think we have built something that sort of says, okay, this is, you know, I've seen loosestrife here, I've seen frag over here, I've got bittersweet here, you know, that kind of stuff. One of the things they're putting into the budget for this year is ArcGIS Pro, which would allow me to do some of the data generation and management. I was sort of sort of farming it out, which gets to other issues as well. It's like, don't trip that. Yep, no, but it's, but it's, but it's a bigger issue, right?
It is really good, that's, that's a good vehicle. It's an easy vehicle for those of us in the public.
Yeah.
To get.
And we may be able to, through our ArcGIS, ArcGIS Online creates a public facing tool. I just, the licensing we have is more for more, like actual people who are going out with a tablet from the town to say, enter things in. There's not like a public facing data generation. So if in this budget, we want to leave something for that and say, well, I'm going to put in a couple thousand dollars to have time, model, create that tool for us at this stage, because we don't really have a lot of ability to do that in-house right now. That could be an option.
How about our regional agency? Are they?
Well, not all the invasive so much. You know, they're doing some projects with aquatic invasives specifically, but that's a little bit different. That's a very small state funded, you know, sort of thing. This is, but for the, your sort of average, I would, this and, you know, that kind of stuff, they're not, they're not doing a bunch with that.
Okay. Okay, well, so I will take that under, but you think a couple grand is going to do it?
Yeah, I think it depends on how, so if we wanted to create something that had a public interface, a separate reporting tool that was on our website, that was like just a form someone could fill out.
Right.
Put in, I mean, at least need coordinates. Like when I used to do basic mapping for the Boston Harbor Islands, I'd be out there with GPS and I'd be like walking the entire standard, whatever it was, and doing trans text and said, that's not what we're going to get out of general public. So I think it's a matter, you know, we can create any fields we want. If so, if we could say, okay, put the, put the GPS coordinate of where you found it, how you accessed it, and then describe it and leave that a little bit more open. And what we're not going to have is like shapes and areas. We're going to have points on the map saying it's here, it's here, it's here.
Right.
So that, that's, I think we, we can roll the community data generation.
So tracking is one of the first things, and then we have to figure out how to eradicate or how to meditate or.
Right, and that's, that's it, that's it, because I think that's, that's a different, a different project. I mean, and we can create fields in this that says, even say, okay, here's, you know, loosestrife found here, loosestrife mitigated here. What's going to happen is somebody's got to be in the back of the house, kind of managing some of that data, because you'll get folks, seventeen people finding the same patch of loosestrife.
Right, right.
And the dots might be slightly off, and then somebody's got to go reconcile that to say, oh, they really all met right here.
Right.
And if we did or we didn't address it, that's going to be the harder part of it.
Okay, but you know, I think getting it on GIS, you know, I, I think to Nextdoor and what they've got, you know, I don't know if you've ever seen that, you know, when they have, you go around trick or treating, that you can indicate, you know, if your house is open to trick or treaters, if you have, you know, whatever, and they put together a map of Clinton, of all the various houses that have signed up trick or treats. It's actually kind of nice, and it happens like that.
Can I just say one thing?
Please.
There are enough, the Lord sent us two copies of the, these are really critical for us in our district. This one here is really invasive aquatic and wetlands. And this one is, you know, your basic Connecticut one. And we've given these out not to everybody in the, well, not just our conservation group, but our board directors.
Yeah.
Educating people on what to look for, okay, might be part of your group.
Yeah, yeah, well, what we did, when we did Naughtwee, Japanese Naughtwee, we sent out all these things about what it looks like and what you do if you have it.
Yeah.
But it was really, you know, we had lots of pictures.
Yeah, and working through a group might be even easier, so, you know, we are a group, so we, we track as a group, but out of our ArcGIS map, but with our map.
Right.
Pointed out, but we have a lot of people in town, a lot of associations, a lot of beach districts, and maybe tracking as a group.
Right.
It's going to give you a better, better sense, and people work better. But those are just my suggestions for doing it.
Right.
We're trying to do it.
Yeah, and to work with the beautification committee and the sustainability committee. There's a lot of people.
Wasting that.
Yeah, there's a lot of people out there, and then the garden club.
And that would be on the GIS or whatever map you use, so these are people you can get in touch with, or groups that you could talk to or whatever, because that's the kind of thing that would be helpful to us.
Yeah, I mean, I mean, a landing pad.
Yeah, it's a place to go and not just the form.
Right, right.
They do the loosestrife, here's a form, and it's going to Yukon, but then after that, we didn't know where it went.
Right, and that's why I think having our own piece where we can generate our data, right, so we have the educational component, here's what you're looking for, here's what it looks for in different seasons, you know, that kind of stuff. And then also, we can track over time, and I think that's the value of the part of this, is for us to say, okay, you know, we took down this tree, I have it in the back of the town parking lot, and we're watching for stumps sprouts.
Right.
And, you know, that's, we can, you know, create some stories to go along with that.
Yeah, no, I agree. So I mean, that, that requires a little bit of work on the website as well as getting a GIS locked and loaded. So, you know, the first steps, get the GIS, then we can, the website's easy, not easy, but relatively easy, so we can focus on that second. And you're right, you can have, here's what it looks like, here's best ways to mitigate it. You know, is this something you need a professional, or is this something you can do yourself, et cetera? I still think we need to have a little Naughtwee SWAT team going around, but that's, I'm going to work on that in my off hours. But now I'm retired, so I got a lot of off hours. Okay, that's that. Any other old business, or should we move on to new business right now?
I just wanted to ask, I'm going to go to the native species talk tomorrow at Yukon and the, let's see, pollinate, pollination. Is there anything that anybody wants me to ask regarding our pollinator pathway in Clinton? And I can ask the question.
Money? Do they have creative funding sources, right?
Right.
One thing that, in the vacuum event for pollinators that I've thought about is creating a program where we offer to the town businesses to prepare planters for them, that they would buy, say for fifty dollars a plant or a hundred dollars a plant or whatever it costs. And in it, you'd have all the various pollinators you could do, and so you'd increase the pollinator gardens at least along Route one. So that's something, you know, do they have any experience with that? It's not something that anybody's thought of.
As long as it's something the students might.
Students might be really helpful. I know the beautification committee is eager to help out on that as well. Well, surely is. But yeah.
Why would you just limit it to commercial activities? In other words, why wouldn't this be like, maybe scouts or other groups to do a, it could be a fundraiser for them or.
Yeah, that's great.
A volunteer project, we could sell it to residential neighborhoods, you know, have different sell pot to a homeowner for twenty dollars, twenty-five dollars.
It's going to be more than.
What do you think?
I think.
What's the price point?
I, I think the price point's probably at the hundred dollar level, because you've got to plant multiple plants, multiple bulbs, you've got to get the soil all put together, all that stuff.
Yeah.
So I, I haven't done the whole working it up.
Yeah.
But I do know, we've got one of those in our front yard, and it truly is amazing. It cycles through the seasons and we have pollinators.
I'll think of what pot are you talking about?
It's maybe.
Diameter wise?
Like this, you know, it's like a wine barrel that's been cut in half.
If, if we want to get serious about it, what, what, what if, I'm just going to throw our big, of course, we got to then have workers, and I, I would help volunteer on this, but if we coordinated it with local nurseries.
Yeah.
To come up with the plants.
Yeah.
Then maybe we have some of the volunteer groups and school groups, we do the planting of the pot.
Yeah.
And then the, the selling.
Yeah. I think you sell it first, use, and then you, because you, it's expensive enough as a thing, you want to make sure you don't pollinate or create and get the money and put it in. It's not like.
Yeah, well, yeah, we established the program of getting the plants, putting them in the pots.
Yeah.
And then obviously, we have to have the orders ready.
Yeah.
Which one comes first? Well, I guess that's something we'd have to discuss.
Yeah.
Going out with getting the orders.
Well, I think you can, you can. You can plan it all in terms of what cost is in the processes, but you've got to get the orders before you get started.
Yeah.
So, anyway.
And just the last thing is, does anybody know if the native species is used as a competitor for invasive species, like if.
It's the opposite. Native species is the opposite of invasive.
Right, so do they use native to crowd out? No.
I mean, you, you try to remove the invasives, and natives have a chance, because the invasives by nature crowd out the.
Right.
The midas, so.
That's what I'm thinking, so. I'm just trying to think of something I can ask tomorrow at Yukon about, is the part of the talk that's going to be on native species? And with the problem with invasive species, and.
Maybe you can ask a question that we asked, you're in a letter to you way, way back, which is, we're trying to be proactive with our wetlands. Because trees are falling down and we're losing a lot in the wetlands, and people in the area are trying to find plants, native plants. What are the best plants? What are the best trees that we could plant back into the wetlands? Okay, to help compensate for all the ones who are losing, okay, and absorb, you know, the trees that are coming down around the neighborhood and, you know, and so maybe you can find that, because that was, if you remember back when Boulder Lake asked two questions, and one of them was invasive species, the other one was, how can we help our neighbors and the people in our area, because we are, we're all wetlands, okay, no matter where you look. And it's worse and worse, okay, because if they just are getting too big, they're taking up backyards where there's no place for people to build. So what can homeowners do to help put more plants back in to help absorb the more of the wetlands? That was that question we asked away back. So if you could maybe ask that, that would be really helpful to us, because our conservation group was really you know, they're just, these are bad. And they're concerned about their backyards, and what are we going to do?
And are you, is it frag mighties that's overwhelming your backyards?
Our backyards, well, say, now, what one can you say?
Frag mighties.
Frag mighties?
No, 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 that's not us.
Okay.
We have still grass, a lot of still grass that's growing, all right? But there are some places we keep the still grass, because it's keeping the poison ivy down, okay? So if it's on the road where we used to have a lot of poison ivy and still grass is there, we made a decision, but right now we also removed still grass, so we could replant native ferns to see. We don't know how it's all going to work, but you have monitors of it all. So things like that, like you were asking, what can you plant? We're trying native ferns to see if that's going to help keep the still grass from growing back, if not, whatever, you know. But again, trees are coming down and you can't move the tree out of the wetlands. I don't have to tell you all the rules and regulations. Okay, you know, we know them, we live in them, but people are trying to find out, what can we do? There's more water coming from our places, because with all the trees that are coming down in our neighborhood, legally taken down, okay, they're affecting the wetlands, even though they're not in the wetlands. And so people are trying to figure out, what do we do? So that's, you know, that was where that question came from, I'm sorry to.
No, so for, you say legally, do you mean they're?
In other words, you know, for example, you know, like we have a, we have someone who took down a massive tree. It was right near our right of way, at the top of a hill, okay? Massive, amazing coverage, big root system, okay? And what that tree did, okay, is it absorbed a lot of water from the drain. And then the root system also kept the underground, we're boulders, we're all boulders. We count on tree roots. Trees are maintained. So now what's happened is more water is coming down the street, it's going into the drains, it's going across the road into the wetlands. Okay, so that is how it's happening, it's happening. Now, that tree was taken down legally.
Yeah.
You know, it was taken down legally, but we're trying to now try to mitigate and try to figure out how can we proactively keep the, keep the wetlands where they are, the size they are, so people can actually still use their backyard. Because it's, you know, of course, we have the drought, so now, because we're doing the reverse of it right now.
Right, right, right.
But it's, that's the kind of thing, if that helps, if that answers your question, yes. So that's the legal part, yeah. People putting solar in, they take down trees like crazy. Okay, and they are all right next to the wetlands.
Right.
And I don't even know if they get, we don't even know if they get permits, but by the time we ask, it's always too late anyway. So, and they're up on hills and it's coming down, and it's affecting private property with, it's all wetlands in the backyard and it's, you know, so unfortunate.
Okay, let's. Is there any update on plan of conservation development? Are we sort of in a holding pattern for now?
We're in a holding pattern. We got some very positive feedback back from the regional council of governments, that's great. Our comments should be back soon, so that's the two big pieces. I'll be going to the town council tomorrow, December third, to ask for their formal endorsement on the plan in advance of the December fifteenth public hearing, which is sort of a final sort of comment people get. And directly after that public hearing, if there's nothing else, you know, earth shattering, we're not receiving a lot of feedback at this point, which I think is a good thing, because we really tried to get folks engaged a long way. We did, the planning and zoning commission will look to adopt the night of.
All right, good, excellent. All right, let's move on to correspondence. Lori? All right, awesome, love to hear that. When are we talking about the budget? Oh, do I have one?
You do.
Oh, there it is. Thank you. Holy crap. So, everybody should have the old budget, tell them donations to regional conservation organizations was two hundred. You know, I don't think we've hit that yet. We still have a little bit of room. Invasive species project was a hundred dollars. That is really for some awareness building out activities around invasive, so it wasn't a lot of money. Member education, sending. Member education, sending people to things like the Yukon Pollinator is, is something that's, uh, public education. Yeah, we've, we've spent money on food waste, composting, wetlands conservation, all kinds of things, you know, we need that to continue. Um, so the only thing I can think that we would cut. Would maybe be on the public education side, but if we start this invasive, so I think we need. We need public education to be even stronger than this, so I. I would actually submit all of this with the additional line item for G S F, G I S modification for invasives. Which is two thousand dollars, so it's gonna dwarf everything.
And that, that's just my, I will, I will go to our consultant and get a very specific member that. Kind of walk, walk through fields and how we manage it.
Right, right, and I think that's really valuable to put in there, I think, uh, you know, it'd be a good way to begin to track this and then. We can build out the town website, we can, you know, we can take steps to get all that done.
Um, let me ask some questions in regard, um, are we overlapping another, um, another commissioner board? Such that maybe we could split the cost with another commissioning board as opposed to taking on the entire.
I can't think of another one that.
Yeah.
Oh, nobody's doing it to me?
No. They're on the budget.
Yeah.
Are we talking about invasives for wet, uh, for aquatic or for land or both?
Well, I think we're starting with land, because we want it on the G I S, but I think eventually if we could figure out a way to do.
Because inland weapons would certainly be.
Sure.
Part of the solution as far as budget.
Yeah, and I can talk to them and see if that's.
Yeah, their budget comes from me, so we, you know, we can talk about adding something in there. It's not necessarily the work that they do, they, I think they would be supportive by, by certainly supportive. They're gonna be evaluating the projects to remove or, you know, right, so they have a difficult plan all of this.
Yeah, they have more of a monitoring and.
Okay.
So I think it really is us. And I think, you know, what that probably means is we have to go make a case to the town council and as to why we've got it and so forth, because. You know, it's a revaluation here and I'm sure that. It's gonna be one of those very, very tight budgets, so an increase, so, you know, it's not a huge magnitude, but, um, it's one that we should, uh.
Well, the two thousand would represent a, about a two hundred percent increase.
Right, right. It would. But again, yes, in terms of the percent growth, but in terms of the overall. Scope of the budget is not, it's, you know, I don't wanna call it a drop in the bucket, but it's a drop in the bucket.
Alright, now, if I could just raise one other subject in terms of setting with budget. Now, we also had a war chest for acquisition costs. Is that separate from this budget or how do we look at that?
It's seven hundred.
So last year we, well, that's the capital funding request, yeah, that's right, okay, so this year. Well, we got agreement from the town council last year and, and, you know, and as you know, I went up and presented to them publicly. Was we, they put in fifty thousand this year. It's in there right now, waiting for us to acquire that piece of property.
Yep.
And we're gonna put in twenty-five thousand for next year.
Okay, so that takes care of land purchase, uh.
Correct.
Funds. Now, what, what I'm talking about is the funds that we had over the last several years. Um, to be able to help with land acquisition costs, like, um, in connection with, uh, uh, getting a survey done or in, in other words, helping. Yeah, with those things, what happened to that war chest? I'm, I'm assuming that's gone down to very low at this stage.
Well, I have to check the balance, I think we, we, it should be down around. Twenty thousand or something by now, there's still, there's still money.
There's still money there, so the question is, are we looking to replenish that? And is that something we would put in the budget?
So that is what the capital fund is intended.
It's fungible, you can use it for acquisition costs or the land itself.
Okay, so the fifty would be part of that funding.
So the fifty is a discrete capitalized purchase of the current property.
Okay.
That's, and that's in the budget right now, that is in hand, because that was part of our grant application, we could have applied unless that was already set.
Okay, so that's been tagged, but now how about the twenty-five every year thereafter, what is that for?
That's gonna go under the open space land acquisition fund, and that is, I don't wanna call it a war chest, because it was just a fund. Okay, it's a war chest.
Yeah, no, understood, okay, alright, so we do have some planning as far as getting more of that. Put back in through that twenty-five.
Yeah, we've got Abby who's just like phenomenal at getting grants for all of those costs.
You're trying to find, yeah.
Uh, so that.
I've got another couple of areas we can go in.
The fifty was for the twenty-five, twenty-six budget? And then the, the next twenty-five will be for the twenty-six, twenty-seven budget, oh, okay.
Yeah.
Every year we submit updated capital requests. Right now, it's already showing twenty-five years out in the future, because that's what the, that's what the town council agreed to last year. So when I do the C I P form, I will update it with, you know, sort of again, carrying out one more year, so every single year you sort of like. Move back here and.
Okay, understood, now I know we're adult.
Yeah, no, good question.
So my last statement is, uh, with regard to the two thousand you're asking. Okay, um, keeping in mind the, the old stories about the kid who puts his hand in the cookie jar, tries to take out too many cookies and gets none. Um, and given the fact that two thousand dollars would represent a large percentage increase in this budget, do we wanna ask for that much?
Well, you can't ask for half of those, you know, doesn't work.
Okay.
So it's either that or nothing, and I guess that's where. You know, it'd be good to get a sense, and you know, we'll get a more formal. Quote on this, so that we can actually put the real number in here, but assuming it's right around two thousand. I'd like to get a sense from the commission. Is this something they're interested in doing? And if they are, you should write on it tonight and give us the power to put that into the budget. When we get the formal, as long as it's not over twenty-five hundred or something like that. Um, you know, we've got formal permission to put that into the budget, so it can go in and do. If we decide that it's not worth it, that's fine too, and we can sort of back off and, and. You know, wait for next year or find other resources to fund it.
So, and again, maybe, um, we could, uh. Have our planner give us a feel for what, what's viable, what kind of ask would be viable in today's climate. Um, and, and also keeping in mind, let's assume it's gonna cost two thousand total.
Yeah.
That doesn't mean we have to pay the full amount, there are environmental groups in town like the C L, uh, the C P L A. Uh, or Connecticut Land Conservation Trust, um, that might be willing to contribute to an effort like that.
Absolutely.
You see what I'm saying?
Yeah, I totally see what you're saying, I. That takes time to put in place though.
Okay, alright.
We're sort of, we can say two thousand, but we'll look to. You know, diffuse the cost to other organizations. I mean, I would think neighboring towns would also wanna get a piece of this as well. If we do a good job with this, this is something that I think people would want. I think the firm would like it too, to tie in bond. Because this might be a new area for them to, to market their services, so.
Okay.
Um, yeah, no, it's something you're absolutely dead on, on that. So, I mean, let's go around, you know, what do people think about this? I mean, it is a real expense and it's one that. So I don't know if somebody would like to.
I think it's important because it's gonna go towards invasive species, right?
Right.
And if you look at, for example, the bitter sweet, I think you mentioned. It's, it can grow even into wood, it grows through wood. You know, it's just, when you slow it down, it's coming back, whatever keeps coming back, and it's more, and, and coastline. So it concerns us.
Yeah, yeah, I've got bitter sweet in my yard and it's.
Hard to.
Yeah, it's like whacking.
Yeah. Uh, this seems to be an issue now.
Yeah.
More an issue.
Yeah, and honestly, not we can go through concrete, I mean, that's the scary thing, it's just like, you know, right through your foundation.
What scares me is the root system can go down, we're saying miles down.
Yeah. So. Anyway, I mean, you know, so getting ahead of this, it seems like it's a very responsible thing for us to do, and this is literally the first step. But it's one invasive species, it's been one that we've kicked around for three or four years. We've done little itty bitty steps forward, but this would be really developing a program. So.
Is there, is there any push on the, on cog to take a leak, you know? Or something like this, because since, since it really impacts on every community.
Oh, yeah.
The, the impact is real, the resources to put to this are not, and so I think there is, you know, again, the, the aquatic invasives, there's task forces, groups that. Really focus on that, but you know, that's a different sort of thing, but for land based stuff, everybody recognizes that as an issue. But there's no cog employee who is assigned, you know, to just do this, uh, or to create a regional tool or that kind of stuff. Um, but again, I think, you know, us doing it, you know, if somebody wants to jump onto the model or, you know, they expand in the geographic area or whatever, but I think having it through our G I S. In, intake, right, that gives us the ability to map things over time, to mentor. To develop a program that we can then say, okay, we, we have the following goals, here are the metrics we've set for ourselves, we can measure, we're applying for funding later, we have data, we can.
Yeah, we, right now, we're, we have to build the foundation, I think, if, if we're gonna do this. And this is a big ask of the commission to actually take this on, so. You know. Mark, looking for your feedback, anything?
I think it's a good idea, like, I think it, it needs to happen to get like started.
Yeah.
And then maybe, like you said, in such a few years. This would, you know, we get funding from somewhere else, maybe. I was thinking, like, don't, do we pay people already to, like, maintain public grounds?
Yes.
I'm wondering if it could be some expansion of that. Footprint, I, I don't know if it.
It does require, so removal of these plants, whether it's knotweed, bitter sweet, uh, tree of heaven, I mean, you name it.
It requires at least training.
It requires training and I'm not sure. Um, I don't know how to phrase this correctly, I, I'm not sure we train our current set now, that could be part of our next step, once we.
Establish this.
Yeah, because I do think, you know, they're out there, you know, they, they attack the, uh, knotweed in town properties every year. Uh, and again, I, I think there's probably better ways for them to go about it and. Um, yeah, we just have to give them the right tools to do it, it's, it requires extreme, I, you know, if the botanical, Bronx Botanical Garden can't do it. You know, it's, uh, it's, it's. Sorry, they've been struggling with it for seven years now, so. Anyway, so this is just a baby step and, but it's an important baby step, it's foundational, so. Um, why don't we take a quick sense of the commission? Uh, I need some way to make a motion. That would be, you know, up to twenty-five hundred dollars if we can fit it into the, the budget. If that's what it costs, um, then we can add it to the budget. Um, as well as, you know, why don't we make it, well, and then we need a second, which is basically to continue our current funding levels in all various categories.
Uh, I'll make a motion that we, um. That we request upwards to twenty-five hundred dollars to be placed in our budget, um, uh, for that project. And, um. You want to keep it, just with that request?
Keep that one and get to a start, yeah, so I will add a line item, uh, can I get a second on that?
I'll second.
Okay, great, any further discussion? No? All in favor? Okay, uh, all opposed? All abstained? It's unanimous, so we'll get started on that. So now I need a second one, which is to contain. Our current, maintain our current funding levels in the various categories that we have right now.
Okay, and I'll make that motion.
Okay, so Lauren's making that motion.
Awesome.
Alright, Barbara seconded, um, any further discussion on that? I mean, that will make it so easy, I can just basically copy case.
And that total budget would be eight hundred dollars.
That's eight hundred dollars, that actually is down from prior years, by the way. It used to be twelve hundred, fifteen hundred, we, we've, I, I think we've been good stewards of the money, we don't even spend the eight hundred, we, we never have.
Yeah.
So. Um, alright, so we've got a motion on the floor, is there a second? Oh, Barbara, yeah, Barbara, second, sorry, okay, any further discussion on this? No, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? No. So that carries unanimously as well. Cool, I can get to work on this and I'll submit this to you in a couple days. Cool, that allows us to move to the. Um, we've already done correspondence, so we're gonna go to the joint land acquisition subcommittee now. Got Mark here and Larry and Mark, so we've got four out of the five, so we have a forum, so, um. There was a very brief minutes from last month, um, can I get approval for the minutes from last month? Can I get a motion to approve of it, okay? Uh, so Larry wanted to approve, Mark seconded. Um, alright, um, any discussion on the minutes? All in favor to say aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Unanimous. Um, so why don't we go through, um. I've got some updates, I know Abby has some updates, um, so we'll carry that forward, um. The email back from Beef had three areas of kind of deficiency, if you will. One was our, uh, we needed to provide them with leaps and bounds. Which is a description based off the survey and based off land records in terms of. The actual property lawn, so that they can put it in, and so that Beef knows what they are doing. Uh, that was our first and primary, you know, Allison doesn't really wanna talk to us until she's got that documented. There were, uh, there are two other areas. That kind of are really paramount to getting this done. The second is working with Eversource to get a permanent right of way. Uh, easement, whatever you wanna call it, from. Uh, the Dowd property all the way through to the new property, so that we can build a trail. Uh, some of you guys were on the meeting we did with Eversource back. I don't know, three months ago, four months ago? Anyway, I've been trying to reach out to that, that person, Jillian. And she has just literally gone dead on me. Um, so I've called her, I've emailed, you know, if I knew where she worked, I'd drop by, we're not opposed to drop bys. Um, but, uh, I'm gonna continue going after that, so as of today, I still have not gotten that process, uh. Mike and I walked the property and we got the coordinates for, for where we're. Taking off from the Dowd property and where we wanna land in terms of. You know, to minimize the corridor that we would use of their right, you know, of, to minimize the right of way. So we've got it now. And, you know, it's part of what I'm gonna share with her, additionally, I, I don't see a purpose for them owning that property. So I don't understand what they use it for, it's not under the wires and. You know, is it something that we could take off their hands or provide land management for them, so that they don't have to? Um, because it was in bad shape. Um, so is Jillian the woman that we spoke to?
Yes.
You want me to send her an email?
Yes.
Say circling back, you know, we haven't heard from you, uh, where do we stand or whatever. Let me give you some, some language. Um, because I, you know, it's sort of like we're getting closer to the purchase. We've been negotiating with the, the, uh, the. Grant that they're gonna give us, definitely they wanna hear from you. That there is a way for us to connect our trail system to this new piece of property. Um, would love to have one more conversation.
Yeah.
Um, and we have GPS coordinates we can share with you along with the distance, that's your wife. Uh, the distance between the coordinates and do all that, so, yeah, I'll, I'll write it up for you and I'll send it to you.
Perfect, and the width of that corridor that we're gonna want is twenty-five feet wide?
Fifteen.
Fifteen feet, okay, and it goes right along the edge of the property?
No.
No.
Cause right through the middle of their property, because. Remember, um, I almost wanna shoot, so you've got the property that goes right along the, the wires.
Yeah.
And then it takes a hard right. And that's where we need to cut through. That hard right, there is no per, there's no ever sourced wires, there's nothing, it's all just vegetation, trees, forests.
Okay.
So really, what I really like is, hey, let's just take that over for you, you don't need to be worrying about that piece of your property.
And when you say hard right, hard right, when you're traveling from the purchase.
If go or something, yeah, if you go, you trust. Think about it going from eighty one along the wires.
Okay, all right, I'm just.
Then you take a hard right.
That's correct, okay, I do.
Um, I could use north and south, but.
No, that's fine.
There's there's actually a road. Um at the end of Creampot.
Yeah, we walk that, yeah.
There is no road, but there's, uh if you look at a map, there's actually a town road, but it 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 literally goes by. People's trailer homes, uh you know, you're. You're fifteen feet away from the the back of their house and stuff, it's, you know, it's kind of. Um. You know, awkward, that's that's the word right there.
Well, it's not even a road anymore either.
It's not even a road, but they call it a road anyway. Um Nick and I thought that that might be a possibility.
Yeah, we explored that.
In this woods. Uh that that Eversource could um. You know, uh. Be cool with it and let us, you know, use, the other. Um. The other point is. The uh westernmost point of the of what was the Dow property.
Hmm.
Um, which is like, I think, eight hundred and something feet from from that point to. Uh the gray ledge property. And then the one that Nick and I took in, you know, the trailer park. I can't remember what the footage was, but it was less.
Hmm.
So, um. But uh, yeah, some something's gotta give there.
Yeah, so we just need to get back in touch with this. Anyway, so that's that's item two in our agenda, and I will put something together for you.
Okay, I was thinking, I was the one who I think.
I think you did.
To her first, but when we had our meeting, I said, well, I'll call her and then, so if she's got a.
I was thinking that, by the way, because she was so good at responding to us the first time. Uh she may not work.
But there's somebody would have to be working there in her place.
Well, and they and they're a professional organization, I would assume there would be email bounce back, but.
Yeah.
Um. Anyway, okay, so we'll do that tomorrow, just, you know, second. Maybe she's on to me, one other thing is my phone number is a two six seven phone number, so people a lot of times think it's spam. And it's unfortunate. Um, so. That was number two. Item number three, and this one's, uh I started whipping on this about a week ago. Um, the survey noted that there were four. Um. Incursions from the uh the trailer park into the property, and they want those. You know, some sort of remedy to them before they go ahead and issue the grant. So I called um. Evergreen Associates or Evergreen Springs Associates, which turns into Bay Shore Associates is actually who I ended up talking to. Um, and they're gonna have their regional manager call me back. Um, they were very pleasant, on the one hand, I I sort of said I had good news and bad news, the good news is. We're gonna, you know, I'm a sales guy. Uh. We're gonna connect, you know, this massive trail system right behind your park, so your. Your tenants are gonna be able to go throughout a very massive trail system. And that'll be a bonus for for you to market, you know? Um the bad news is we've got four issues we gotta take care of. And I explained exactly which ones. Um I couldn't give them the address, she wanted the addresses of the transgressors, so I might have to go back one one day.
Okay, I I can also work with you on the math for the property.
Okay, cool. Um, yeah, because I don't wanna go back there again.
So they're in.
It's not, yeah, they're.
Just a little bit, yeah, just a small approach.
Yeah, so there's, you know, one, it's a shed, another, it's a death.
Dare stand.
And then another, it's a so stairs.
And then one is just a lawn, they.
They they extend it, one, a lawn and a shed.
Yeah, okay.
So um the lawn's easy, we can just, you know, I would, I would just say, we'll put a fence along our property line. Just right there, just to, and then that'll allow. On our side to grow native and they can maintain their. You know, when I say a fence, I'm talking about just a.
I I don't even know if we need to do a fence, as long as we've resolved the issue on her.
All I want is for them to say, yes, we'll resolve those issues, and then we don't even have to force it negatively.
The issue they don't have is the quit claim.
Right.
Back to the land trust, saying this is, it's helpful, that's for true.
Yeah. So, anyway, that's that's my update, the most recent. Because the survey has been such a nightmare, Abby just heard from our surveyor, so what what'd they say?
So he's provided an updated survey and legal descriptions, so and so we'll see what the meets and bounds looks like, I will forward it out, um.
Good, so we may have a resolution there, cool.
And the deep surveyor is Brian Flora, and he's co, he's copied on this with Alison, so he's sort of in the loop now, um so. That's we can be a survey of a surveyor, that's helpful.
Oh, cool, that's perfect. All right. Um, does anybody have any other? Kind of sir. Information on this acquisition?
Uh just one question, uh.
Sure.
Up upcoming deadlines. Um, are we uh still within our good time? I know we're running up against these issues.
We are.
Especially with the survey, but.
Yeah, I think if the survey is fixed, we're fine.
Okay.
If the survey were to dry on for two or three more weeks, I think we're in trouble.
Okay.
And. So.
I think that this the survey resolution and the quit claim, because that. Interest, I don't know that they will let. This, they they won't necessarily prove it to go to the P N S and the closing. Until those quit claim issues and and encroachments are resolved.
And once we get the description agreed to. Um, we'll be able to uh have the attorney Ken um move forward with the agreement.
Yeah.
Involving the description.
Yep.
Okay.
So. Yeah, I mean, it goes back and forth between.
Exactly, so, okay.
Can I know if that do it?
Although the owner is aware of some of these. Rips in points already, or?
I don't know.
I believe Ken has been in in contact.
Okay.
Okay, so I forget, what was the timeline we proposed to that, to the owners?
August. So we're, but you know, Ken has definitely let him know that, you know, we're we're going through abortions.
Okay, so when you say we could be in trouble, it's not really with the ownership or the grant possibility.
Correct, Deep has its own timeline that we have to move up to. I mean. It seems because we're engaging with them that they're less concerned about the timeline, but nonetheless, we've gotta get it.
Yes.
Um, so, yeah, I mean, we've got a couple things, that quit claim is gonna be important. And getting Eversource to play ball is gonna be important as well, but honestly, the meets and bounds is the biggest thing.
Hmm.
Because they won't even talk to us, I mean, you know, some extent, we can, we can say, hey, we'll put in a three car. Thing if we can't get right of way from Eversource. But we know that Eversource will give us the right way, so it's not gonna be a problem.
Yeah.
So we could put that language into, I mean, we know that. Uh I just think from the phone call, it didn't sound like there was an instruction to it, and it's such a. Non. We're not close to their wires at all, I think that they will do it. I don't. I got a very positive.
Oh, good.
Feedback, I I mean, you were on the call too, I mean, it sounded like they they do it all the time.
You mean the call with Jillian?
Yeah.
Yeah. So if they if they've done it at the preserve in Sabre, and they've done it at other places.
Yeah.
Why do they say no to you?
Yeah, yeah, that's that's what we're hoping.
Somebody who's somebody pretty senior, Eversource. And I'm trying to remember who it was. Well, within the land trust.
Yeah, not, I don't know if it's senior, but I think Dana had some connections there, um.
She said, which Dana?
Dana Dana Whitney.
Whitney, yeah.
Not Dana Skidmore.
Okay.
Yeah.
Because Dana Skidmore said she didn't, but yeah, why don't you ask Dana Whitney?
All right, well.
Because it would be helpful to have some. An ally there.
Oh, yeah.
So we basically need like a letter from Eversource and then a letter from the.
Yes.
The trailer owner trip.
The owner's actually quit claimed, then we made a quit claim deed from them, essentially saying, we're revoked, we're we're giving up any and all interest. That we believe we may have in these, in this area of the shed, specifically to the shed.
Which would quite any type of a adverse possession of the money.
Well, those two things are the main things that we're going.
Yeah, okay. Anything else? Can I get a motion to close the land acquisition subcommittee? I'll wait for it. All right, Mark. He's jiving on the spot there, thank you, sir. Ah, my foot checked. Can I get a, uh, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all right, so the land acquisition is now closed. Um can I get a motion to adjourn the conservation mission?
Someone.
So, I'm Jake. Second?
Okay.
Mark. Got really good. Yeah, uh, all right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? This meeting is better.